Good evening and welcome to the Monday, June 24th Maplewood City Council meeting. I always like to start off with maybe a story from Maplewood and I just couldn't help myself. Felix the Cat has survived. Felix the Cat, for some of you who know, social media folks out there, Felix the Cat was a big social media story this last few days because he went through a 45-minute wash cycle in the washing machine and it so happens that Felix is a Maplewood resident. And so I thought I would report back to everyone that Felix has survived. There is currently a GoFundMe page because Felix, after that ordeal in the washing machine, Felix had to go to the emergency vet and that runs about $1,000 a day, I guess. But he now can see again and he is on antibiotics and he's walking and he's eating, so Felix is okay. And they've already raised $6,500 and Felix is owned by Stephanie Carol Kirkoff from the city of Maplewood, so.
He was all washed up.
I just couldn't help myself. Felix has survived. He's a social media, you know, even made some national news coverage. Felix the Cat, so a Maplewood resident, what do you know? Yes. So with that, let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Cent, would you please do the roll call for us?
Councilmember Knudsen.
Here.
Councilmember Juniman.
Here.
Councilmember Neblet.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Mayor Abrams.
Here. Thank you very much. We have tonight an amended agenda that was amended today. Councilmembers, you all should be working off of the amended agenda. We have added to it, and it's available online, I believe, as well. Is that correct? We've added at the very end of our meeting, a closed session to consider purchase offer to sell city-owned property at London Lane. We'll get to that at the end of the meeting. So with that, councilmembers, is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Second.
Moved by Smith, seconded by Juniman. Are there any other, is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Motion for the agenda passes. Moving on to the City Council minutes for June 10th, do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Workshop or meeting, we have two sets.
I'm sorry, pardon me?
Workshop or meeting.
I'm sorry, workshop minutes. I'm sorry, workshop minutes. Is that Councilmember Neblet moved the workshop minutes, seconded by Smith? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Minutes pass for the workshop. Moving on to the City Council meeting minutes for June 10th, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Neblet, seconded by Smith. Any further discussion? I see your light, Councilmember Juniman.
We need to make a grammatical correction on page two, item three. It should say this item was moved to the end of the meeting.
Ms. Cent, did you get that?
Packet, page three.
Can you say it one more time?
Yep, packet, page three, F3. It should say this item was moved to the end of the meeting.
Okay, and I would like to make one editing suggestion as well. Under two, I highlighted the development at Maplewood, or excuse me, at the Elk Ridge ribbon cutting, the trails edge of Maplewood. It shouldn't be grand opening, it's the groundbreaking. The grand opening is another year from now. Just the groundbreaking. This was the shovel opportunity. So if we can change that to groundbreaking. So with those edits and changes, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Aye, motion passes. Moving on to administrative presentations, the council calendar update. City Manager Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor Abrams, members of the City Council. The council calendar update is meant to give you a preview of what's coming up at our next workshops or council meeting and also to update you on where we're at with some of the topics of concern or things that we're working on on your behalf. So on July 8th at our workshop, we will have a presentation from the administration and IT departments and also we'll start with a kind of big picture looking at the 2020 budget. On July 22nd, we'll have presentations from Public Works and Community Development. August 12th, Public Safety and Finance Department presentations. With regard to things we're working on, still on the list is this pedestrian safety plan which Mr. Love and his staff are working on and we expect maybe a fall delivery on that. We also will have a report for you, I think at the second meeting in July, on the on-street parking ordinance, which was adopted last June, and the new excess calls for service ordinance, which was also adopted last June, and we'll let you know how we're doing on those two items. Also, on the board and commission interview review process, I have completed a meeting with all of our advisory boards and I did get some input from them on suggestions for maybe how to enhance our commission candidate interview process and I'll be putting together a little report for you and my question is, do you want that on, as a business item on an agenda to look at that or do you want me just to send you what they had to say and then you can tell me you want it on an agenda? How would you like to do that?
Councilmembers, any thoughts? Councilmember Juniman.
She could tell us, tell us what they had to say and see if it's something we need to talk about further on the agenda.
Okay. Could I include it in FYI or?
Is everyone fine with that?
Okay. Okay, thank you for that. And then I was going to point out just a couple of highlights on the council calendar, which is also included on the second page. On the 25th, that's tomorrow evening, there'll be a ribbon cutting at the Edgerton Community Garden and that's from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. We also have Tuesday on the BRT trail and that meeting's going to be at the, where the Vento Trail meets up with Jarvis Avenue and that's from 4:00 to 6:00. And that is, the intent is to have people, residents who live in the area, go out and hear from county representatives about the project and they can address any of your concerns that you might have about that. So that's from 4:00 to 6:00 tomorrow evening. On the 26th, we have our fire station study open house and that will be from 6:00 to 7:00 PM at the Hazelwood Fire Station on County Road C in Hazelwood. And in addition to that, we have another activity, the North End Study Work Group is having their last meeting. They've been working on the North End Study for over a year and at that meeting, it'll be at the library from 6:00 to 8:00 PM and they're going to kind of recap the open house, which we had last month. They're going to look at the vision plan document as it's been produced so far and do a prioritization of recommendations, which will then come back to the council for final approval sometime this summer. So there's a couple of things going on the next two nights and then just highlight also the Fourth of July celebration, which is in Hazelwood Park from 5:00 to 10:00. And on July 10th is the Wiper Avenue Parade. That's always fun and that's from 6:00 to 8:00 PM and that's when councilmembers get to ride on the fire truck, so that's kind of fun. And July 11th will be the second meeting on the fire station study and that open house will be at the fire station down on McKnight by the 3M campus. So those are just a couple of the highlights from the upcoming community events council. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions or take any direction if there's things that you'd like us to look at.
Councilmember Juniman.
Thank you. Just so the public is aware as well that we have scheduled Tobacco 21 for August 12th. And are we inviting anybody in particular or not? I don't know where we were on that.
Yeah, so let me kind of refresh my memory here. I believe what we decided to do was that we would have it on the council meeting, but we would invite everybody. We sort of heard from T21 group.
Yep.
And then we would allow the public to come in who have licenses and we would hear from them at the same time. Unless you want to do something different, which we can do.
I just wanted to refresh my feeble mind too.
About what we talked about. Sort of. Can we call on Andrea? She might have a better memory than me.
I think the last direction that I had received and I may be misunderstanding was that you wanted the businesses to come in as a workshop and then same night have a public hearing where both the, both sides could be heard. That was my understanding and now whether that's where we are, that's up for discussion.
Councilmember Juniman.
I just wanted, as a point of interest, it was on the national news last Friday. If they can do it, I don't know why we can't do it, but whatever, the city of San Francisco has outlawed vaping, period. I couldn't believe my ears, so I listened again to make sure I had gotten it right. So I'm like, hmm, and we are still dickering about T21. All right, just a little point of interest.
Thank you. City Manager Coleman, can I make one suggestion? You know, in looking at this, this is always very helpful for me to have all of this information on one page and then I rip out the page because I bring it home so that I can take a look at all the events that are coming up. But I look at the council comments, right now we've got two, three, and five under council comments that have already been completed.
Yeah.
And I don't think that we have any, we're not circling back on any of those. I think we've already done it. I know we did that for the tree program. The superintendent, you know, she was already here and the levy or the bond passed and the sign removal, that's already been completed. So can we remove those things?
Just take them off?
Take them off so that it's a cleaner?
Sure. I'd be happy to because then it looks like we've got it done.
Okay, well.
So that makes sense to me.
Okay.
Thank you.
You bet. Okay, there were no council presentations, so let's move on. That's kind of an unusual night, but let's move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda or any highlights?
I move approval of consent agenda items G1 through 6.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Juniman, seconded by Knudsen. Approval of the consent agenda items 1 through 6. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Consent agenda passes. We have no public hearings tonight. In terms of unfinished business, we have a resolution awarding the sale of general obligation bonds, Series 2019A. Ms. Paulseth, this is yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonight, the City Council will consider awarding the sale of the general obligation bonds, 2019A, as you mentioned. The city called for the sale of the bonds in the amount of 4.7 million. The bond proceeds were designed to provide a portion of the funding for the street projects for this summer and those are Ferndale Ivy Area, Malin Crestview Forest Area, and the Gladstone Phase III Corridor improvements. So tonight you will be asked to pass a resolution awarding the sale of the bonds. The sale took place this morning. Our consultants from Ellers analyzed the results and are here to present the sale report to you. We have Bruce Kimmel from Ellers, who will be presenting the sale report and giving the recommendation and while he is presenting the report, I will pass it out to you.
Mr. Eller, or Mr. Kimmel, sorry.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Just made you an owner, I'm sorry.
I like it, thank you very much.
Did you like that?
Yes, thank you very much. Is this being taped?
If only I had that power, I don't.
Well, while Ellie is handing out the sale day report, I just had to mention along the lines of Felix the Cat, I have a cat that would get locked in the washing machine. So after hearing that story on the news, I am going to make sure I check the washing machine because she is the kind of cat that would get in that trouble.
Forty-five minutes in the wash cycle.
Don't let Felix's experience happen again.
Exactly, exactly. So if my cat Ivy is watching, we'll make sure she learns from that experience.
Good.
Well, Madam Mayor and Council, I'm Bruce Kimmel with Ellers. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight and to share this excellent news on the city's bond sale. All of you have in front of you the sale day report and as Ellie mentioned, we took bids on the city's behalf at 10:00 AM this morning and received seven bids from underwriters across the Midwest and outside of the Midwest. Ellie mentioned the three projects that are being financed with this bond issue, but I did want to note, you probably, you might recall from the pre-sale report that the original bond offering was for 4.7 million dollars and you can see that the final bond amount is for 4,475,000. You might wonder, how is it that you're financing 4.6 million of projects with 4.4 million of bonds? And it's because the winning bid, bid what's called a premium bond for your bond issue. So they actually offered you more money than the bond face value and we were able to use that extra money, that premium, to buy down the bond issue. So that worked out really well and when we analyzed the bids, we look at the premium, we look at how much discount, which is like points on a mortgage they take, and we look at the interest rate, calculate everything together to come up with the best overall bid. And that best overall bid came from a group out of Oklahoma called The Baker Group, an underwriting firm that's been very aggressive and we are pleased to see a bid on your issue here today. If you move forward to the bid tabulation, I just wanted to point out something that's pretty remarkable. So of the seven bids, you can see that the first six bids were all within 10 basis points or 0.1% of each other. So that's how aggressive the bidding was. That's how much underwriting firms from around the region wanted the city of Maplewood's bonds. It's pretty, pretty remarkable. And even the last place bid, Boney Mellon out of Pittsburgh, was still better than our pre-sale estimate. We had been estimating about 2.8% and they were at 2.54, bringing up the rear. So overall, we are really thrilled with the competitive nature of the bidding. This is certainly representative of what we're seeing in the market, but even more so due to the high credit worthiness of the city of Maplewood and I'll talk about that in a minute. So what I wanted to then show you also is the final debt schedules. We won't go into a lot of detail here, but if you move to the sources and uses of funds, you can just see that $204,000 of premium that we were able to use to reduce the bond issue size while still paying all of the cost of issuance and fund the city's 4.6 million of project costs. I did ask Ms. Paulseth after the sale, did the city need to keep any of that premium? And she said that she and your team felt pretty confident about the costs for the projects and you didn't need any extra money, so we reduced the bond size, which is always a nice thing to be able to do. And then the next two pages are debt schedules. Again, I won't go into them in great detail, but I did want to note, because this is something that we pay close attention to, you can see that these bonds go for 15 years and the bonds will be callable as of February of 2028, so eight and a half years roughly from now. What that means is that if interest rates are favorable at that time or if you have surplus funds that you want to apply, we can use any of those opportunities to either refinance the bonds for interest cost savings or to pay down the bonds. And I know that debt reduction, debt management is of interest to this council and so we'll certainly be working closely with Ms. Paulseth in that regard, but roughly the halfway point, these bonds will be prepayable. I also wanted to point out on the next page, as you may recall, you're using a diverse range of revenue sources to pay the bonds back, using special assessments, you're using utility revenues, and you're using property taxes. So you can see, we've calculated the final debt service on the bond issue, we've multiplied it by 105% and then you can see we're reducing what's ultimately coming from the city's levy by the amount coming from assessment revenues and from utility revenues. And so in the far right-hand column, you can see what is projected to be the levy requirement, roughly about 155,000 a year and that's roughly 40% of the debt service. So it's an excellent way to, again, diversify where this debt service is being paid from and we worked closely with your team in making sure we had all of the revenue sources coordinated. Are there any questions about the bond sale or the debt schedules before I talk briefly about the credit rating?
No.
Okay, very good. Well, so then, I don't know how many of you have had a chance to see this previously, but we had a very, very successful credit rating experience with S&amp;P, Standard &amp; Poor's, and they affirmed the city's AA+ rating with a stable outlook, which is an excellent outcome. As many of you may know, AA+ is only one notch from AAA, which is the very highest possible rating, and you are at this point rated on par with the US government. I don't know if that's good or bad, but it's very good for the city of Maplewood. And what I really want to stress here, Mayor and council members, is that if you read this report, you're really doing everything you can within your own control in terms of your credit management, your fiscal management, and you earned very high marks from S&amp;P as a result of this rating process. I want to point out on the record that S&amp;P recognizes your exceptional management team. I don't think I've seen those words in a rating report before, exceptional management team. And they really are almost beside themselves in terms of talking about how strong your fund balances are, how strong your liquidity is, and at the end of the day, that's really what they look at most. Of course, they care about your debt, your economy, other factors as well, but in terms of strong budgeting, strong fiscal management, you're really hitting it out of the park. So kudos to all of you on that. And I also wanted to note that we had a good discussion with them about the city's future financing expectations. I know you have a few major projects coming up, but Ms. Paulseth was also very careful to help them understand how the council is wanting to reduce the city's debt over time by using funds on hand to fund some of these street projects in the future and they were very receptive to that. So we'll continue to have that narrative, that dialogue with S&amp;P and that will certainly, I don't know if debt reduction in and of itself will get you to AAA, but it certainly won't hurt and we'll just keep talking about economic development and all the other good things that are happening in Maplewood as well and try, and certainly try to keep moving the ball forward towards AAA. So very, very positive and again, congratulations both on the sale results, what that will mean both for the taxpayers as well as for the assessment payers and for the city overall. If there aren't, I would welcome any other questions and if not, please review the resolution in front of you.
Thank you. I want to thank you for helping us. This is, I think, the first bond.
It is.
That you have helped our city with. I also want to personally thank our city manager for her leadership, for our leadership team, for Ms. Paulseth and our finance department, because for the time that I've been on the council, this is the best report that we've gotten and it really shows that hard work and really looking at our asset management plan, looking at our debt reduction, bringing all of this together, having staff that really work to their strengths, I think, is showing up in the kinds of reports that you just gave to us. So thank you very much and thank you, staff. Let's give them a hand, our staff a hand. You folks did an amazing job. This is the best bond report we've ever gotten, so thank you so much for that.
It was a lot of fun to be part of and as I told Ellie, she makes my job as your advisor very easy because very organized, both getting what we needed for the official statement as well as for S&amp;P and everything went really smoothly. So it was a pleasure, thank you.
Thank you. We really appreciate it and thanks again to staff. Councilmembers, anything else you want to say?
Mayor, I move approval of the resolution awarding the sale of the general obligation bond Series 2019A in the aggregate principal amount of $4,475,000, fixing their form and specifications, directing their execution and delivery, and providing for their payment.
Moved by Smith, seconded by Juniman. Approval of the sale of the general obligation bond, Series 2019. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Aye, motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
What great news.
Yeah.
Very much appreciated.
Not surprising, though.
No, it's not. We've worked to get here and we've got great staff. So now moving on to the next agenda item, on sale, intoxicating liquor and Sunday sales license?
No.
Under, nope. I'm sorry, what are we on?
J1. Bottom of page one. Penalties for alcohol compliance failures.
Oh.
I'm sorry, yeah. J1, penalties.
Okay, you're right. Thank you. We are on to penalties for alcohol compliance failures. Ms. Cent, this is your time to speak. You want to give us your report, please?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The Maplewood Police Department has completed their annual alcohol compliance checks of our 37 licensed liquor establishments. Three establishments failed this year by selling alcohol to underage buyers. The list is on page 103 of your packet. Two of them were on sale, one was off sale. I would like to note that in 2018, we had eight that failed, so this is better. The criminal charges are handled through the court system. You are able to assess civil penalties to the businesses for these failures. Our city code does not define these fines and so as staff, we propose the fines for you and then city council approval is necessary in order for us to actually impose those fines on the businesses. The past practice has been to fine $500 for the first offense. Second failure then brings a $1,000 fine and the third failure is a $2,000 fine with the fourth failure being a $2,000 fine with a seven-day license suspension. And the timeframe that we use is five years for that, the first, second, third, and fourth. And using those guidelines, Chipotle number 224 is at their second failure. They had one last year at the end of 2017, actually, that we assessed in 2018. So we are proposing a $1,000 fine for them. Red Lobster, this is their first failure that we had on our books, so we are recommending a $500 fine. And Surax, their last one was four years ago, however, we are asking for a $2,000 fine because four years prior, they had a $2,000 fine because four years prior to that, they were on their fourth with a $2,000 fine and a seven-day suspension. So with that, we did notify the businesses of these fines and they have been told to have a representative here tonight to speak to council if you choose to have them address council. And at that point, we recommend that council make a motion to approve the proposed compliance failure penalties that are on page 103.
Okay, thank you for that report. Councilmembers, I'm going to give you an opportunity if you would like to speak before we hear from a representative from the three establishments. Councilmember Juniman.
This is my favorite topic, you know, not, I guess, I don't know about the rest of you, I'm not sure that we need to hear from Red Lobster since they have not in recorded history apparently had a failure before, but they better not get a fat head and think that we're not noticing because we are. But I'm a little annoyed with Chipotle and I can't even think of the correct word of how I feel about the Surax International Wine Spirits failure. And if I could think of it, I probably couldn't say it publicly. So yes, we need to talk to at least Chipotle and Surax if they're represented here.
Any other councilmembers before we hear from the representatives? Okay. Then representatives, what we're going to do is we'll start with Chipotle and then Red Lobster and then Surax and this is your opportunity. I guess as the mayor of the city, what I'm interested in learning is what's going to change. Obviously, you know, we take our liquor licenses very seriously in Maplewood and these kinds of failures are not okay. We want to be able to support you in your business, but on the other hand, we can't have these kinds of events happening. This is really important to us. And so I'm interested in hearing what you're going to do differently so that we can avoid this and you aren't going to be back before us. One of the things in terms of Surax, I think, Ms. Cent, I do have one question for you. You know, the $2,000 fine, you know, they've already been fined $2,000 three different times and this is the fourth time. I certainly don't ever want to see Surax back here again, but is it time for us to consider increasing that? Is it possible to increase that amount? Because the $2,000 is certainly not, it doesn't seem to make a change. Is that the maximum that we can do? It is?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Then let's hear from a representative from Chipotle, if you would come to the DS, please, and state your name.
Hello, councilmembers. My name is Ewell Adeta, General Manager.
Hi, hello, council members. My name is Ewell Adeta, general manager for this location, Chipotle. We are deeply disappointed to have to be here under these circumstances, obviously. Does not follow in line with our policies and procedures. I was absent at the time of the incident, but one of our employees failed to properly validate an ID before completing a sale. She has expressed her regret as well, and she has taken accountability for that. We have had formal performance discussions as well to make sure that an incident doesn't like, happen like this again. Anything like this again is going to result in her immediate termination, but she is one of our most tenured employees, and this is not like her, right? I was made aware that this is the second time that it's happened at this location. First time happening prior to my arrival. I've only been here since September. So, that being said, we are also, I have already completed alcohol training with all of my managers, as well as all the crew members, but I will be looking to enroll them in an official course as well, so we can sign off on that. That being said, it is, it is a new management team here, and we regret this. We do not want this to happen again, obviously, of course.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chief Nadeau, would you comment about the criminal side of this and what happens? So that, this is more for residents and actually for our new council members as well, what happens to the criminal side?
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council. So, there's, there's kind of a dual track here where there is a criminal prosecution. So, the person that served that beverage is subject to prosecution. They'll have to go to court typically and meet with the prosecutor. The judge will then determine the amount of penalty that will be imposed, and as we're doing tonight, there's also a sanction that the city can apply, so that will happen as well. Obviously, the expectation of the council has been clearly defined tonight, and so, you know, we in the police department will continue with the criminal prosecution through the city's prosecutor. They are very much aware of the city council's emphasis on legal sales of alcohol, so that process by the report here is still considered open, so that has not yet been resolved, but we will be prosecuting on all three cases tonight.
Okay. And just for point of clarification, the actual server who served the alcohol illegally, they're the ones that are being prosecuted. Is that right?
That's correct, Mayor. The, the person who violated the liquor law by selling to someone underage will be, will be prosecuted. And we tell the underage people that go in, if you're asked for identification, you produce your identification. If they're asked how old they are, they, they repeat truthfully, so there is no, there is no deception on the part of the people that we use. They're told to cooperate fully and be truthful, and so, again, we expect those questions to be asked.
Thank you for that. Council members, anything for Chipotle? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, can we have a representative from Red Lobster, please?
Hi, Derek Allen, general manager of the Red Lobster in Maplewood. We also obviously failed a sting. I regret being here as well. Our server actually asked for the identification during the sting, and she misread the date on it. She even commented that the date on the license was the same year as her daughter, who was obviously of age. Regardless, we get that, you know, that's unacceptable, and a fail is a fail on either way. Our servers do, along with our bartenders, take an extensive alcohol responsibility training before they're even allowed on the floor. Serving alcohol, and they take a test at the end of that, and that's not just not serving underage, serving alcohol to underagers, that's also not over-serving people that are of age and responsible alcohol-serving as well. Every day now, we have a check-in card that the servers normally use. On it, we have a stamp that says check ID to remind everybody every day to check their ID. Every terminal that servers use to ring in orders has in big letters on it before they sign in today's date, and the actual, if you're on or before that date, what the, what your birthday would be if you were 21 or not, to, again, remind that. So, we really, really take this seriously. You know, obviously, we could have done better, and we're working with our front-of-the-house team to, you know, zero tolerance for this sort of behavior. And again, you know, every, every little step that we can do to avoid this in the future, we are doing.
Thank you. I appreciate hearing about those efforts. Mr. Allen, thank you. Any comments or anything for Mr. Allen? Okay, then, CERAX.
Thank you for your time.
Hello.
Good evening.
I'm Chris Cerec, owner and operator of CERAX. It's unfortunate again to be here. Some things are, are sometimes beyond your ability to control, and the position that I'm in is, is extremely unfortunate, and I can only apologize. It's not only embarrassing to my company. We made massive efforts after the last one that we were, when I was here last time, to make sure that this didn't happen. We had a cashier that had been working for us for six months, relatively new. We've gone through programs, we've gone through everything we can. We have a POS terminal that basically says how old you have to be. She read the ID. She still made the sale. For what reason, I cannot tell you. Besides that, I really don't have an answer for you. I'm, I'm basically at the mercy of my employees, and we go through this on a weekly, if not daily, basis of trying to instill in them that this is, this is, this is our job, and our job is, you know, is our profession, and as our profession, it's my livelihood. And I can't really have that happen, and so she was immediately terminated. It's unfortunate, because she's a very nice, she was a very nice person, and it's a mistake that is, is just unacceptable. And so, I'm basically at your guys' mercy. I understand that we've had issues in the past, but that is going, moving forward, it's, it's definitely weighs heavy on my mind, our, our past issues, and this last one is, is not only disappointing, like I said, it's very embarrassing for us.
So, what are you going to do differently?
So, differently, we've, well, differently, we've, as far as our hiring of cashiers, we have started to instill a program of, an in-house program of learning, well, basically, how to read an ID. I didn't realize that that would be something that would have to teach people that, you know, how to read an ID, but the, the importance of, basically the importance of not selling to minors is basically an in-house. We do, we do weekly and monthly, and basically, almost daily. Whenever I'm working with, with cashiers, it's a daily thing, a daily reminder, and my managers are under the same, under the same premise that every single day that we walk into that store, we are reminded that this is our job to make sure that we're carding and that we're not selling to minors.
Okay. Chief, do you have any other suggestions as to what might be done differently? What resources are available? I know we've heard about these before.
Certainly, the mayor and council, certainly the, the practice of using a service to come in and do the training would be helpful. I think that some points of sale actually incorporate that you can scan the driver's license and/or have to slide the driver's license. Do you have that on your point of sale?
I do not have that on my point of sale. All our point of sale has is basically before we can start a transaction, it lists the year, the year that, the year and the date that you have to be.
That is the one physical barrier, I know, Mayor, that the point of sale literally will not process that transaction until an ID has been swiped and/or scanned. I think that there is a way to be able to scan the barcode on the back now.
I will definitely do some research into that, and if we, if we need to make that change, we will, and I do believe that we need to make that change, and maybe take a look at a new POS system.
Just a thought, it might be cheaper than the fines.
I understand. I, I am flabbergasted to be here. I just, and I apologize.
Okay. Thank you. Council members, councilmember Juneman.
Well, as the one who was, was really sitting here way back in '06 when this all started, to say that I'm annoyed is understatement. I appreciate that you're embarrassed, and I appreciate that it must be hard to think about sometimes, but I, I'm going to go the extra step and say what he just said we want you to do. You need to do the scanner. Obviously, it doesn't work to just tell people, and it would spare you having to come back here, and it would spare you having to fork out some more money for a fine. So, I, myself as an individual, I'm saying you need to do this.
I understand.
It doesn't look good for this longstanding a business to have these happen fairly close together. I would hope that the goal now is to get it to five years from now, and this doesn't happen again. And I think the only way you can possibly do that is with what the chief said. I think you need, obviously, something that almost no one can make a mistake with. I'm not saying it can't, but you're cutting down your chances.
I understand.
I mean, I remember when it was owned by your father, so, you know, I'm older than dirt. But I do remember, and I, I feel bad that there are this many, and I don't want you here again.
I understand.
Council members, do I have a motion?
I move approval of the penalties for alcohol compliance failures as indicated by staff.
Second.
Moved by Juneman, seconded by Knutson. The motion to approve the compliance failure penalties is proposed by staff. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you for coming, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, and it's, we hope that we don't see you again.
I hope not.
All right?
We're doing it under different circumstances.
Right. Under different circumstances, that's right. Thank you for that. Okay, now we move on to on-sale intoxicating liquor and Sunday sales license.
Co-incidentally.
Right, which is probably not a great segue for our new business.
Couldn't be done in a better way, my son.
Yeah. Sorry about that. There's no good segue to this, okay? We had to do this tonight. City Clerk Sint, do you want to give us a report?
Yes, Mayor and council. Tonight, for your consideration, we have an on-sale intoxicating liquor and Sunday sales license. Council approved a CUP for 1800 White Bear Avenue, which is the old Junior Achievement Building, back in November of 2018, for it to be a restaurant bar banquet hall and a fitness gym. And as noted, in November, the CUP approval did not include the liquor license approval, and so now the city has received an application from Noachas LLC, doing business as Unison, to open a restaurant and banquet hall at 1800 White Bear Avenue Suites A and B as an intoxicating liquor license establishment with Sunday sales. And just to note this, according to, in accordance with the CUP conditions, they are not looking for a 2:00 AM license because they are closing earlier than that. The Suites A and B will be constructed as compact and contiguous to meet the state statute, and the third suite, which is a fitness gym, is not part of this approval. Unison is working with the city's building, health, and fire departments to meet all the necessary codes and requirements, and they will need to have approvals from all those areas before the actual license will be issued. And tonight, we are just looking for the approval from city council as one of the steps for approval for that license. The background checks have been conducted on the three partners of the corporation and on the establishment's manager. Nothing has been identified that would prohibit the issuance of the license. The chief, Chief Nadeau, has met with the, with representatives from, from this establishment, from Unison, to go over general expectations of liquor service, and they are here tonight, if you have any questions. And after you have had discussion, we are looking for a motion to approve the issuance of the on-sale intoxicating liquor and Sunday sales license for Noachas LLC, doing business as Unison, at 1800 White Bear Avenue Suites A and B.
Thank you very much. Would a representative from the establishment please come up? Please state your names, and welcome.
Good evening. Welcome. I'm Kalia Moore, I'm the owner for Unison, and it's good to see council members and mayor again, and seeing some of the new faces in the city of Maplewood, staff and leadership. So, thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Kalia's husband, two-year. Good to see all of you guys again. Good to see everybody smiling, too.
Thank you.
My name's New Moore. I'm the co-owner of the Noachas LLC, and I'm, I'm glad to see you guys tonight, yes.
Thank you. We're glad to see the business, that your plan is moving forward. Is there anything that you would like to say to address the council in terms of, of your request for a liquor license?
Yeah, I think prior to this, we've heard, you know, very clearly how important it is not to serve to underage. I think, you know, definitely being with Director of Public Safety, it's important, and we will ensure the importance of that with assets owners and to our site manager and employees. We are attending the Serve Safe, the class certification there as well, too. It's not required in Minnesota, but we are taking it, to learn more about it, and taking parts of that, and I think, you know, definitely testing our employees so that they are, they know the importance of it, too. And then also, through the Minnesota License Beverage Association, they have an online that I'll be looking at as well, in ensuring that we provide training for employees, testing for them, ensuring that they comply to what we are expecting of them, which is to ID, and then not to serve to intoxicated persons, and also noticing when they're intoxicated. And so, those will be important factors as owners that we take, and then, you know, just, you know, ensuring that, yeah, we, they also take the importance, because we have, there are fines for that, and hearing from Scott Nadeau, definitely criminal prosecution. So, they're aware of how serious it is for employees and to us. We're taking it very serious. Thank you.
I hope you would consider, based on the previous presentation tonight, a point-of-sale scanner.
Yeah.
It may be something worth researching for you. Just a thought.
Yes, I think you're definitely right. As, just like Councilmember Kathleen said, it's worth the, the payback. You know, it's better to pay it first, and, you know, try to prevent as much as we can, and I think that, right now, I'm in the search of a POS system, and so now they've came down a lot in pricing as well, but the fact that there is a POS check ID for the licenses, I think that's going to be great, so, definitely.
We've got some lights on. Councilmember Juneman?
Well, she stole my thunder, and you answered my question, but I am glad you're looking this seriously into training and also the scanning. As you can see, the scanner would save a few people a lot of grief over time, and being that you're starting a new business, and you were so excited when you came in here last November, we wouldn't want to see you have to deal with something like this. It wouldn't do you any good, and it wouldn't do the city any good. So, I'm glad to hear that you're this dedicated, and I would definitely look into the scanner system.
Okay.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Moore, I just want to thank you for starting your business here in Maplewood. Nothing makes us more nervous than big, empty buildings. And, you know, when we heard the news that Junior Achievement was moving on, I think we were all concerned of what might, what might come of that building, and we were just very thrilled to know that you were bringing this mixed use in, I think that will serve, serve the community really well in that space. So, I look forward to coming and having dinner sometime.
Awesome. Thank you, councilmembers.
When do you plan to open?
Most likely in September, yeah. We're, yeah.
Great.
Planning for early September, but, you know, I'm sure that will slip a couple weeks.
We're, we're just very thankful for you guys taking the plunge with us here in Maplewood, and look forward to your success, and-
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Council members, do I have a motion?
I move approval, pardon me.
On page 104.
I got it. I move approval of the on-sale intoxicating liquor and Sunday sales license for Noachas LLC, better known as Unison, 1800 White Bear Avenue Suites A and B.
Second.
Moved by Juneman, seconded by Smith. A motion to approve the on-sale intoxicating liquor and Sunday sales license for Noachas LLC at 1800 White Bear Avenue Suites A and B. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes, and welcome to Maplewood.
And good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to dog license review. Ms. Sint, this is yours as well.
Thank you, Mayor and council. So, we go from Felix the cat to dogs. So, at the request of council, we're going to recap what our current dog license process is, and then talk about some of the options that other cities are doing right now. Currently, Maplewood has a two-year license for all dogs that are over three months. This ends on even years, and so that ended in 2018, and new cycle started-
A new cycle started in 2019. We asked for the original signed rabies vaccination certificate to be produced to us, and fees start at $21. And then if it's a spade and neutered da, or neutered dog, and if it's a senior that owns the pet, there are discounts for each of those. As far as the number of dogs that you can have, two are allowed in single-family and double-dwelling units. If it's a multiple or R3, it's only one. And the exception is that you can have three dogs in a single family if you have a small kennel license. And that requires, the first, the first year, it's $85, because there's some work in that. The staff here has to contact by certified mail the neighbors that are affected. We have to get 75% approval from the neighbors, and then once that happens, the CSO will go out and check the site. After that, it becomes an annual license of $45. And so they have that every year, on top of every two years, licenses for the three dogs. And just a little history about that small kennel license. The original, as far back as I could tell, began in 61. And in 90, they added the residential component. So prior to that, it was really for being a kennel. Now it's more for people to just have a third pet. In 93, it went from six being allowed down to three. And then the general process of, of asking the neighbors was created. And then in 2013, they moved from having the applicant going around asking neighbors if it was okay to have a third dog, to allowing, to having the, the city contact the people. That added a little hardship to the neighbors. So, so that's just a little history about the small kennel license that does create some problems with people because they think, well, if it's a kennel, we're going to have something in the back of the house, they're going to have barking dogs all the time, when really it's just a third pet. Statistics-wise, we have about 840 renewals this cycle. We get about 1,000 tags for every two years. We have an expiration date on them, so we have to get them. That is more than we actually need, but that's the right number to have in case people come into town, if they lose their tags, whatever the case may be. As far as time spent from the administrative side, we estimate it's about 120 to 150 hours for the two years. And the average revenue, looking over the past five years, has been about $7,000 a year. Currently, we have 13 active kennels. Since the report was written, we got approval for addition, an additional one. And that brings in about $600 a year. And since we've had this, the small kennels, we, I think, basically bounces between 12 and 14 since 90. Just comes and goes. We did look at other cities. We looked at 68 metro cities, and that included the 18 other Ramsey County cities. And that survey results are on page 120 and 121 of your council packet. There were four basic types of options. There was the yearly, which about two-thirds had the yearly license. The next, most popular, was to have no license at all. Then there was the, have a yearly or lifetime option. And then last, there was the lifetime-only option. So, just a little bit about the yearly license, most of them were one or two-year, some had three-year renewal. They ranged in fees from $5 to $58. The majority were between the $10 and $20 fee. Those that had no license, I did break those out a little bit more, those other ones, on page 122. There was no license, no kennel, where the largest city that did that was Brooklyn Center, of those that we surveyed. No license with kennels after they had reached a certain max. The largest city that's doing that right now is Plymouth, with 70,000 people. The cities that require, that are offering both yearly and lifetime include Minneapolis and St. Paul, along with Roseville. And usually, lifetime also comes with a requirement that the animal be microchipped. And we did see that they will also put a sunset date on the record, just be, of like 15 years, because your data becomes irrelevant very fast. With lifetime, three, three cities had, that we, that we looked at, had a lifetime but no kennel option, with Bloomington being the largest of those. Now, when we looked at all of that, the common pieces with that is that all of them had codes that stated that the owners were required to provide proof of rabies vaccination on-site. And they were all required to have ID tags. And so that was whether they went and bought a cute little one themselves, didn't matter, it was just they needed to have an ID tag on. 80% of the cities had a maximum number listed in their code, regardless of whether there was a license requirement or not. And half decided to use a kennel or a multiple animal license to control that maximum, and half chose not to. So that's really a split. When it came to benefits of having a license, it really seems that it comes down to assurance of rabies vaccination and the assurance that the animal would have an ID tag for lost or wandering dogs. And then some cities that had dog parks or pounds, they would use that revenue to maintain those facilities. So far, I've only talked about the administration part of it. The part that probably takes the most time is the enforcement part. So I did talk to the CSOs about that. They are our primary responder, as we don't have an animal control officer any longer. If a CSO is not available, then a police officer will respond, but the CSO will do all the follow-up on that. Looking at 2018 data, of the 625 animal calls, 375 were for dogs. That would have been for the initial call, for any follow-up, and that does include dangerous and potentially dangerous dogs. And in 2017, the numbers were basically the same, very, in the same range. When the CSO goes and talks to, because an animal has been called in or complained about it's running at large, whatever, if they can identify who it belongs to, they will ask if the animal is licensed. If they notice more than two dogs, they will ask if there's a small kennel license, and then they will do appropriate follow-up with that. If it, if the call was because there was any kind of, like a bite or anything like that, they will ask for proof of rabies on-site. They are not going to wait until they come into the office to find out if there is anything, if, if, if there is rabies vaccination on, that is up-to-date. We don't necessarily always have up-to-date information because the rabies vaccinations come at different times. As far as time per call, they estimated that it was a half an hour to an hour for the initial call, and then follow-up was a half an hour to several hours, depending on what the issue was. And then also, if there was any boarding that was needed, because maybe the animal was, was at large and they couldn't find the owner, or if it was a dangerous, or potentially dangerous, then the responding officer brings the animal to St. Paul for boarding. Just a couple of things to note, that no privilege is given to a licensed dog over a non-licensed dog. You don't get five minutes more of barking or anything like that. They, all dogs are expected to behave, and all owners are expected to be good owners. And when it comes to the, the dangerous and potentially dangerous dog designation, that is a completely separate process that is driven by state statute, and that is not anything that we're talking about here tonight. So that's kind of a brief look at what our current process is, and what some other options, what other cities are doing. And so at this point, I would say, if you have any questions, we'll answer those. Otherwise, we are just looking for direction if you want staff to do anything further.
Sure. I want to thank you for a very thorough report. I learned more about dog licensing in the Twin Cities than I thought could be possible.
Chief Dog Catcher.
Yeah. It, it was a very thorough report, so thank you for that. I see two lights on, but I don't know who was first, so I'm going to go with Councilmember Juneman.
Thank you, Mayor. I think you can kind of surmise that no license required, in most cases, comes from cities that have just given up. That's what that is. I don't think it's necessarily a good idea to go that route. I think our first mistake, that would be the mistake of our predecessors, was to call it a small kennel license when you had to have, why didn't they say multiple pet? I mean, really? That's our problem, I think. And I do think, we had, we just had an incident in our neighborhood last week, haven't had one for months, and I'm walking my young beast, and this very flighty, fearful dog is running down the street the other way. Probably got a good look at my dog and went, get me away from that. But anyway, the lady at the end of the street corralled her and put her in her backyard. She had a collar on and an electronic collar and no tag. Well, isn't that just dandy? So she said, should I call the CSOs? And I said, yes, because this poor animal, we don't know, we had never seen it before, so I have no idea. The happy ending to that is they did find the owner, and she was returned to her home. The irony of it is, two days later, I saw this gentleman walking this dog and another one that I had never seen before in the neighborhood. Fairly interesting, but at least they were on leashes. I'm not sure how you handle those types of things if you have no licensing. I'm not sure what the deal is. That's part of what bothers me about giving up totally. But I think we could go to multiple animal instead of small kennel. Small kennel, I have this vision, you know? I made it off Legos, small kennel. Wasn't a good term ever. I think maybe a max is a good idea. Things aren't exactly the way they used to be for a lot of different reasons, and there are certain people who like to amass numbers of certain breeds, not for the right reason. So I think we have to have some kind of a way to say, what are you doing with six dogs? I mean, really? And yet, I don't know that the CSOs want to call on somebody that they have, where they have no option of, say, well, we just thought we'd tell you you shouldn't have them, but oh, well. I mean, you've got to have something that can be enforceable. I think the small kennel thing with having to ask the neighbors is kind of ridiculous, if you want my personal opinion on that one, but whatever. I think you should have a chance to have three dogs without your neighbors giving approval. If you blow it, that's a different, different item completely. So I, we probably need to tweak it, but I wouldn't, I personally am not in favor of getting rid of it altogether. We need some kind of a hybrid of what we've had, I think. And my own experience in my own neighborhood, like I said, just this last week, and several times in the past years, has been, very often, you can find the owner, and without a license, it's more difficult.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I was the person who sort of brought this up. I am one of the 12 small kennel license holders in the city.
Such a deal.
We are actually down to two dogs now, so I will be reducing our small kennel license number by 10% the next time that they review, single-handedly with my license. I had done a little math, so we currently have 840 dog licenses. According to the American Pet Products Association, 60% of households have a dog. That's approximately 10,000 households in Maplewood. There are 89.7 million dogs in the United States. There's 327 million people. If we take that ratio on a per capita basis, there should be about 11,000 dogs in Maplewood. There's probably more than that, because I would guess we over-index on dogs here compared to the nation, but let's just use that number. If we use 11,000, that means currently 7.5% of dogs are licensed. And my, my guess is of that 7, 7.5%, they are going to be much more likely to have ID tags already, and are much likely to have the most responsible owner profile. I am a dog lover. Oh, and then the other piece of math I did is looking at the staff time of 150 hours, just using sort of a plug of cost at about 50 bucks an hour with benefits and everything else, and taking that against our $7,000 of revenue, we're netting $1,000 a year out of this program. So, my thought is that, I think when dog licenses were first thought of, and, and it was harder to get people to vaccinate their pets, and it, and people didn't, weren't as focused on putting ID tags and things like that, I think these made a lot of sense. Nowadays, you can't take your dog to the dog park, or, or a border, or doggy daycare, or groomer, anywhere else without having your rabies paperwork with you. I think there are other structures with which that those vaccinations are taking place. Plus, we're only covering seven and a half percent of them, most of which would probably vaccinate them anyway. And I just don't see a lot of purpose for this, and it kind of goes back to a similar theme of our discussion when we were talking about the alarm permits. Is just, I'm all about having permits and enforcement actions if they, if they have utility. I'm just not sure that the utility is here. And it, it appears to me we're sort of creating a permit process that costs money for the folks who are the least likely to be a problem, and is not really doing a whole lot of public benefit, and is not really, you know, a financial benefit for us. So from my perspective, I just don't see a whole lot of purpose in this. Now, that is also keeping in mind from what Ms. Sint said, that we are not talking about dangerous animals in that process. I do believe the city has a, an absolute duty to make sure that we are providing public safety when it comes to animals who could be dangerous to people or other animals. This is for the, the run-of-the-mill process. So from my perspective, I think based on the numbers, our current performance, the financial piece of it, and sort of the lack of benefit to the city, I, I would like to see this just go away.
Thank you. Councilmember Neblet?
Thank you, Mayor. As a non-dog owner, and having just read this amazing ordinance, my, I guess the, the one thing that comes to mind, or the one question I had, would be the idea of a lifetime license, which was like, that would make sense to me, versus me having to remember every two years to come back and get a license. And just, it's a lot to think about. And I just wondered, as I was reading through this, are, are owners required to read this so that they know exactly what it is that they have to do and who's reminding them? Because I can imagine myself getting my dog license and then sticking my paperwork in the file somewhere. I think it's, I, I think it's important to have some kind of licensing system in place for animals. I just don't know if it's, if we're going off your numbers, 7% of families are registering their dog. Dare I say, it seems like overkill, to have this much, overkill, to have to, every two years. And that's not to say that dogs still shouldn't have their shots, shouldn't be neutered and spayed and all of that. Yeah, just seems like a lot.
Okay. Councilmember Juneman?
Thank you, I have a question. So if we don't do anything in the way of licensing, then how do we finance? I mean, they're going to call somebody, they're going to call the police, probably. This dog's running up and down my street for two days, or, you know, this, my kid dragged this dog home on his ankle and I want it gone. How do you finance that?
Councilmember Smith?
I'd argue we don't finance it today.
Well, we, yeah, we are. We're still ahead. You pointed it out with all your nonsense numbers.
At $1,000 compared to hundreds of calls.
Uh, councilmembers, you know, let me ask one question, Councilmember Smith, just for a point of clarification, because I got some different numbers. The report talks about 120 to 150 hours are spent throughout the two-year cycle, so that's over two years. over two years. And the annually, over the five years, the dog license revenue has averaged about 7,000. So it's-
Yeah, math is wrong.
So, yeah, I think we're actually netting approximately 4,000 a year is kind of the numbers that I came up with, because-
Yeah, that's fair. That's right.
Is that, okay, so we are coming out ahead, just for a point of clarification with that. But one thing that I'd like to do is ask a question for Ms. Sin. And this goes back to, Councilmember Smith brought up the alarm system licensing that we had, and I learned something kind of surprising that night, because I made an assumption that we were licensing alarm systems for a specific reason, and it was to provide valuable information to the city, so that if there was a false alarm or alarm at a home, that the police officers would go and look at that information and would have information about who has the key and all of that kind of information. That was false, that was false. The police, in fact, maybe when the alarm system ordinance was adopted, maybe back then they referred to it, but today, they never refer to it. And so basically, what was happening for people with alarm systems was that they would fill it out, turn it in, pay their money, and then you just would file away the paperwork and nothing would happen for it. And it really didn't serve a purpose, other than as a fee. And I certainly don't want to just have fees for no purpose. I understand the benefits about ensuring rabies vaccinations, but are we really ensuring that people have rabies vaccinations? I think that there are, I agree with Councilmember Smith, that going to a groomer, or boarding, or any, or anything like that, you have to have that rabies certificate. So what is the purpose? We don't have, we're not funding our dog park, or a pound, that's not happening. Is what we're funding, the CSOs going out there and addressing those dog calls? Or maybe another way to say it is, what is the purpose of dog licensing?
Well, Mayor, Council, you've just asked a question that I think many councils are asking themselves. I, in fact, talked about this at my clerk school when I was there at St. Cloud, and we had over a dozen towns, from Minneapolis down to cities of less than 1,000, and everybody seemed to be kind of grappling with this. Should they, do they serve a purpose? Knowing that compliance is very low, especially in the small towns, they knew almost all the dogs that were there, and yet, they weren't licensed. And some of them were losing money on them, on the program. And so you've asked a question that, that we were trying to come up with an answer for. My personal opinion was that those that were very adamant about licensing are very adamant that dog owners should be good dog owners. But a license doesn't guarantee that. So, right now, I can tell you that when a dog is licensed, we do give a spreadsheet to the CSOs, so they know who is licensed. And so when they come back in, they will check that, and if they are not licensed, then that will require a follow-up. And usually, several, in order for them to become licensed, and then they contact our staff, who's on the lookout for it, to see if they're coming in to get their dog licensed. So, yes, I would say that it's hard to say that $4,000 covers the CSO's time for everything that, I mean, they're putting in more time than we are, and than admin is, to maintain this. Now, will those calls go away? No, because dogs need to be controlled. I mean, they, if they're out, if they're at large, they need, somebody needs to corral them. I don't know that I've answered your question, but I have told you that-
It's, you're very diplomatic, that's true. And it is a difficult question, because maybe what started out as an ordinance that had a purpose, maybe it has outlived that purpose if there really isn't a rationale for us to have that. Let me ask you this. Obviously, if we were, if the council were to decide that, you know, this has kind of gone the way of the buggy whip, and I don't know, I am still working on that in my own mind, but people still are required to get rabies shots, and so we have to make that a disconnect if we were to get rid of dog licensing in our city. We did get rid of cat licensing, and when did we do that?
I believe that was in 2016.
Okay.
Well, that was futile from the beginning.
Yeah. And, so, we got rid of cat licensing, but what would happen if someone did not have, what, what is the repercussion if someone doesn't have a dog that's been vaccinated for rabies? Is there anything there? I mean, what, what's-
At this time, if, I am, I think the only reason they would ask, the only reason the CSO would come out is if your dog was doing something wrong, and the neighbors called on it, or somebody called on it. And I, I'm not quite sure, I don't know that, that they asked for rabies proof unless there had been, say, a bite or something like that. And that, again, will then kick you into that dangerous dog, potentially dangerous dog category. So what we as staff see is that now we are not only trying to get somebody to come in and get their dog identified as a dangerous or potentially dangerous, but also get them licensed. So we're-
It's a little late for that.
Yeah.
The people need licensing if they have those kind of dogs.
Okay, so we've got the other comments from councilmembers, and I'm just gonna start to my right this time, so Councilmember Neblet.
You know, thank you, Mayor. I think, I think you answered, or took the question that I had about purpose. What was the purpose of this? The other thing, oh, never mind, that's it.
Okay. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. And I, I think, whereas Councilmember gentlemen, I may have a different idea of how, getting about it, I think we have the same end goals, which is to make sure we have good, healthy pets and good, healthy people in our neighborhoods. I just want to be clear, too. I do think that if we were to get rid of something like this, we do have to clean up some of the ordinances then to cover some situations, like maximum number of dogs and whatnot that right now is handled through the licensing process. So I think there's, you know, I would be very supportive of making sure that as we go through this process, that we make sure it's not a free-for-all and we all turn into the bumpuses from Christmas Story, like, that we have kind of a thought-through process. But, you know, I think I'm just, from my perspective, wanting to be really cautious that we're not just doing it, because that's what we've always done. And so anyways, and I apologize for my error in arithmetic.
You should.
And thank you for the extra shaming.
Dog fights, that's true. Okay, Councilmember Juneman.
Okay, I'm confused, which isn't new, but how, I mean, if the dog isn't licensed and has no ID tag on, and a CSO goes to a house, how are they supposed to find the home for this beast?
Okay.
No, not everybody's chipping, because that's expensive.
Ms. Sin.
Or maybe the chief can answer that, I don't know. We may as well drag him into it.
Mayor, members of the council, if the dog was licensed, I would assume that you can, you can backtrack that. If it's got a rabies tag on, you can try and figure out through the clinic and the rabies number. The best way, and something we strongly encourage, is chipping.
Right.
Unfortunately, a lot of folks move and don't update the chip information or change phone numbers, and so that's something that's also pretty important, but it at least gives you a starting point. You know, the police have access to databases. You give us a name, we can go, hopefully figure out where the people are. But they'll also drive the neighborhood. So, you know, we'll drive the neighborhood, they'll look for folks out in their yard, and, you know, we've got a yellow lab on board here, does anybody know where it lives? And then we keep detailed information and, you know, at times put everything from dogs to parakeets on our Facebook page. I believe that, I believe that parakeet drew 18,000 views. And so we've got a variety of ways to do it, but obviously, having identification on the dog, with our dog at home, we've now stitched her name and phone number, well, not her phone number, my wife's phone number, right onto her collar. So there's, there's diff-
Yes, the dog is unlisted.
Not yet listed. So there is a variety of ways, and we'll try a variety of ways. Typically, when someone's dog has been missing for some time, they'll call us. That's the best-case scenario.
Okay. So, I'm still, oh, okay, Councilmember Juneman.
To his point, we are, we have to figure out if we're gonna do away with this. It has to be kind of what I call a slow process, till we figure it in the other blanks, like, how do you let people know that there's a maximum, and that type of thing? I mean, you really do. And albeit a small number, my theory kind of is, if you have 800 of them who are licensed, that's 800 who are licensed, and it's, there are, you know, the other 9,000 and whatever who aren't, aren't really my problem. I, it's, it, they're easier to get home, and they're easier to get off your streets, and they're easier to return where they belong or whatever, if they're licensed. It's just another way to, if you will, cross-reference where a beast comes from. And it's, and there are people who feel it's a service that you have a dog license, actually, because they think it's another way for their dog to be IDed, if it's, you know, say it gets out of the car somewhere else, they call the city where it's licensed, and that's just, so you have to, that's the piece that you, I don't know if you can quantify it or not, but it's a qualifying thing for some people. I'm just saying.
To me, there is a, a little bit of a disconnect here, in that a license, it's not ensuring, you know, there are so many unlicensed pets, that isn't a real help in terms of getting dogs inoculated for rabies. So it's really not serving that, that purpose. And in terms of being able to return a dog because of a license, I think that you certainly don't need a license. You can go to, you know, you, you get the rabies little tag that, from your vet, or you go to one of our pet stores and you buy a little, you could have it engraved, and have your information, your contact information on that. So it, it isn't really necessary to have a dog license to do that. And so I'm still grappling with, what is the purpose that we're trying to do? I would agree with, with Councilmember Smith and Councilmember Juneman, in that I still think that we need to have a limit, in that, you know, I'm pretty comfortable with the number three, because that seems to have been working for our city. It's just this other part of it that I can't really nail down the purpose and why we should be going through this, with staff time and all the time for our residents to go through this whole process. Councilmember Knutson, you're going to weigh in on the dogs, too.
Yeah, I just think I have a dog. I'm just thinking, really, the, the process of licensing is really more like registration. Almost should be voluntary, because you want to be able to find your dog, as Councilman Juneman is talking about. It's not really to protect the public so much as, as it is to have the dog owner have some kind of ability to connect, which they could do anyway. So I, you know, it's, could be a service, and agreed that we should have, you know, the things that we want to enforce for public safety and for just being good neighbors, we ought to do, but the licensing seems to be a little bit perfunctory.
Councilmembers, I'm gonna throw out a little idea there, so that we can wrap this up, maybe, okay?
I still haven't answered my, my money question, either.
Okay, we'll get that in one second, but just a thought I will throw out to kind of bring this to conclusion, is that I kind of like Councilmember Knutson's idea about maybe a voluntary registration. If you believe that you would like the city to have this information, you can send this into the city, and that way, if your dog gets lost, it's a way of, you know, some information at the city that might be helpful. And then we continue to have a, we don't call it a small kennel, because I too have envisioned a very small kennel. Multiple animal. What do we want to do with that? Do we want to have a, well, it's gonna take staff time to do that.
Whether you have two or three, I'm not sure.
Well, I'm just thinking that we still have a, a multiple dog licensing, if you, if you want to have multiple dogs, three is it, and go to just that, what we're not going to be calling a kennel license, but stills-
Would it be just a limit, or would it be a license?
Well, councilmembers, I'm interested in hearing what you have to say. Councilmember Juneman.
Well, if you're gonna have more than three, there has to be something that says.
Yeah.
Yeah, you either say, "No, you can't, move to Oakdale," or, you know, or we have a mechanism that says, "You may not have four, and if you do, you get fined," or whatever, because that, and that all started in many places because of the noise. The more, you know, one barks, three bark, six bark, you know, people are losing their models they have left. So we have to have some kind of a mechanism for that. And again, anytime you have a mechanism that's gonna require any enforcement, I'm still asking, if we're gonna be sending the CSOs, that's fine, but, so we're expecting him to take it out of the police budget, because we're saying, "Yeah, yeah, you go chase the dogs." I mean, I, I just think we need to talk about that, even though we weren't realizing a lot of money, as you said, it was like $4,000 a year, so we have to find that somewhere.
Councilmember Smith.
I think, so, again, doing some quick math, which I think I did correct this time, that $4,000 at 625 calls is $6.40 a call, which I'm guessing covers maybe a tenth of the cost. Can I, I didn't interrupt you, Kathy.
Well, just wait, okay, let's not-
I'd like to get through mine.
Cross-talk, okay? Councilmember Smith, you've got the floor, go ahead.
Thank you. So, I mean, I think from a, from a budgetary perspective, it's a, it's not really material. I think we should be careful to be solving the problems, not solving things that might lead to the problems. So if noise is the problem, we have, we have a nuisance ordinance around noise, and I believe there's some specific language about how long a dog can be barking and whatnot, like, let's look at the ordinances we have, and do they solve the problems we need them to solve, and not create a secondary issue to, to get at those problems indirectly. I do think, from my perspective, the, the dog number limit is more of a public health perspective than a, just noise, but like, it's just gross to have 10 dogs, you know, in your house, and this is someone who's had multiple dogs. So, you know, I would, I would say that we not license, that we just say, "This is your limit," and, and not have to try to micromanage whether you have two or three dogs, and just try to keep it simple, and, and look at, I like the, I actually was thinking about the registration idea, too, and I think that's a great idea. That is truly a service, and it's something that we could do, just even setting up a basic online survey with a spreadsheet on the back end, and, you know, no one really has to manage that unless someone needs to submit by mail, and that's probably gonna be relatively rare. So I think that, that feels like maybe a neat compromise.
And then, okay. Councilmember Juneman, did you have something else?
Wise. Wise. Are we gonna be asking Ms. Sin now to do all the cross-referencing? Okay, is this answered in this ordinance, is this answered in that ordinance? I mean, we're gonna have to go that step, but this is where we're gonna go. So I'm just bringing it up, so she can take six weeks' vacation, or put it way down on our list. But, I mean, the point is, if we're doing this, then we have to find where it's cross-referenced and make sure it's addressed. So that will involve some staff time.
All right. I'm going to try to put this together in at least some consensus, because I don't, we're not able to take any action tonight, but-
We can't take action tonight.
Right, we can't, what? We can, well, I don't think, I think we want to, we want, yeah, give, we, and I'll try to pull it all together. But what I'm hearing is some type of consensus that, that the purpose for our ordinances really makes a difference to us, and that we just can't nail down, you know, what once was a good purpose for having a dog license ordinance may not be something that we're, that really makes of, is of value to us right now. It's, times have changed. But voluntary registration appears to be what the council, what I hear from the council members, that we would go to a, we would get rid of our licensing system. Obviously, that doesn't do anything, it doesn't absolve anyone, you still have to get your dog rabies shots and all of that, but it would be a voluntary registration if we- If we could do that online, that would be great. And I would be inclined to do that as well for even the three dogs, but I think that I would still like to have it on our books, that, that there is a limit, that you can't have any more than three dogs, but we'll just register them online, and that way, it would help CSOs if there is a lost dog, but we can then avoid all of the staff time, and really, for a purpose that we've spent now, I don't know, 45 minutes talking about, that we can't really nail down the purpose, because I think that it has changed significantly. Councilmembers, does that sound like where we may want to go?
Yes, there's one item here that we would have to address, because there's a, right now, it says, R1 and R2 zoning, you can have two, we're not saying three dogs. Now, you're saying, R3, which is multiple dwellings, they can only have one, so how are you going to address that?
Well, Ms. Sint, right, you get, wait one second. Ms. Sint, can you give us a suggestion on that?
I would say that you would say, R3 has a max of one dog.
Okay.
So, we keep that as, okay.
And, and just, just for your knowledge, that service dogs don't count.
Right, right. We're not talking about service dogs, we aren't addressing them at all. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. Is there a chance we could leave the R3 situation up to landlords and associations to make that decision?
I'm not comfortable with that. I think that's going too far.
No, it just depends on, it depends on the building and the units, and if you have two small dogs versus two big dogs, like, I don't know, I had, we had two dogs in our place in St. Paul, which was a condo, and it was fine. So, I, it just feels like a little discriminatory to me.
I don't know. It was in the rules before.
You know.
That's what I'm saying.
Hold on, let's not have cross-talk, please. If you, Councilmember Smith, do you want to make your point?
Yeah, I think my point is, I would just leave it up to those communities to, to make those decisions within the broader context of the, of the ordinance, and, you know, then people can choose whether they want to live there.
Question. Councilmember Juneman.
So, is this a zoning thing or a dog permit thing at the moment? That's what I'm asking, the sentence that says, residents zone one, R1 and 2 are allowed two dogs, we would say three now, while R3 units are allowed one dog. Where is that now? Is it only in the dog ordinance? Okay.
Would this kind of change require any other changes in any other ordinances that we have that you're aware of?
Mayor and council, not, not that I'm aware of, but I've only been focusing on the dog ordinance, so I.
We've gone to the dogs.
I, I can't say that for sure.
Okay.
How about the nuisance?
We've spent quite a bit of time on this. I'm, personally, I'm comfortable leaving the zoning, R1, R2, and R3 as it is right now. I think that's a whole other issue, and it's not an issue that's been, really been presented to us. I'm comfortable leaving that as it is, but then going to a voluntary registration.
So, if we do away with the licensing, we're still going to have a dog ordinance that will say this part? That's what I'm asking. Where are people going to find out that R1 and R2 have?
Councilmembers, or, excuse me, City Clerk Sint.
Mayor and council, I guess I would envision that we would do a amendment or modify this or the, the code.
Okay.
To show that the license has been, is no longer part of the code, it would be gone, and that all of these, the rabies vaccination needing to be, being required, the maximum, all of that would be resident in the dog code.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Then, what I would suggest, since we've, you know, I think we've kind of gone to the dogs here tonight, folks, that we can have, ask you to take what we've talked about tonight, and then come back to the council, so that we can take formal action on this. Is that amenable to my fellow councilmembers? Okay. Yeah. And Ms. Sint, when do you think that you can bring that back?
Three years from now.
After all of this research, I know.
Mayor and council, I think that's just one too many questions for tonight.
You know what, I'll leave that for you to work out with City Manager Tolman, all right? Very good.
You're welcome.
One too many questions. Thank you for all of your help on this. I know, you know, it's important to be able to process it, and to really figure out, what are we, what, what can we do to make a really good decision? So, thank you for all of your time and effort on this. I know it's been brewing out there for quite a long time, and we're getting there, so thank you. All right, we have two other items, and then a closed session. So, we are going to move on to the resolution adopting Preparation of Feasibility Study for Dennis McClelland Area Street Improvements, and Mr. Love, that is your turn.
Mayor and council, good evening. If I could get the computer up on the monitors. So, tonight, the Preparation of Feasibility Study is really your first step towards a street improvement project. This would be a project that would be constructed not this year, but next year. I have a map here of the project area that was included in your reports. As you can see here, the neighborhood that we're looking at is north of Upper Afton and kind of west of Century. One of the unique things about this particular project area is Battle Creek runs along the north side. Battle Creek is an impaired water body. There's also a very steep grade that goes from mayor there to Battle Creek. We did have a stormwater issue a few years back, where we had a system that blew out down there. So, as part of this feasibility study, we also are proposing to do a regional drainage study for the area, so that as we prepare that feasibility study, we've really analyzed not only the water quality issues, but also the stormwater requirements that would possibly be included with this project. Overall, the project is about 2.04 miles of road, and our pavement condition index score, which again is on a scale of one to 100, is 36 in this neighborhood, so it is certainly an area that needs to be redone. This is a full street reconstruction project, so we would be introducing concrete curb and gutter. I believe we'd be looking at, working with St. Paul Water on the replacement of the cast iron water mains that are out there, as along with sewer repairs. So, again, you know, by authorizing us to do this feasibility report, it really gives staff the direction to proceed with the preliminary work such as soil borings, surveying, we have our appraisal of the properties to help us define the assessments, as well as host a number of neighborhood meetings. And with that, I am available for any questions.
Thank you. I have a question for you. I, I already know the answer, but it's, I think, very good for citizens to know this. When is this project actually going to be done?
Sure.
It's proposed to be done.
Yep, so, Mayor and council, typically for our average neighborhood projects, we start them a year in advance. We start with the feasibility study, we have all the neighborhood meetings. This particular project, if we start the feasibility study now, wouldn't be constructed until next summer.
Twenty twenty.
So, it would be a year away from now.
And the reason that I ask that, councilmembers, I went to the Regional Council of Mayors meeting a couple of weeks ago, and there, at the end of the meetings, there were about 35 mayors there, and at the end of the meeting, they encourage us to ask questions and share ideas, and there was a question from a mayor who wanted to know, what is the timeline that you all use for your road projects? Because they were trying to look for a road project to get done this summer, and all of the construction companies were booked out, and they couldn't find anyone to do their road projects. And so, they wanted to know when everyone else started the whole process, and there were, there were two.
Don't tell them.
There were two other mayors who chimed in and said, "We're having the same problem, too," that they aren't able to get road projects done this summer because they haven't gone through this process. And there were a number of other mayors that chimed in, and I projected out that we do a year in advance, and other people were saying the same thing, too. And so, I think it, it really shows how long these timelines are, and the planning process that has to go through it. And so, Mr. Love, thank you for bringing to us the 2020 projects, because there might actually be some people who will be bidding on these projects, but there are three cities out there that aren't going to get their projects done this summer, because there's no one, they're all booked by everybody else, so. With that, are there any questions? Then, do I have a motion?
I have a mundane question.
Oh, okay. Councilmember Juneman.
Is James Drive really only a block long and isn't anywhere else? I mean, I looked at this map, and I went, "James Drive."
Mayor and council, yes, it is one block long in Maplewood. And now, to the east or west, there could be a James Drive, but.
Oh, we don't know, okay.
But in Maplewood, it is one block long.
Okay.
Okay, James Drive, okay. Is there a motion?
I move approval of the resolution adopting the Preparation of Feasibility Study for Dennis McClelland Area Street Improvement City Project 19-10.
Is there a second? Moved by Juneman, seconded by Neblet, approval of the attached resolution ordering the preparation of a feasibility study for Dennis McClelland Area Street Improvement City Project 1910. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Mr. Love, you're on for the next project as well.
Yes, Mayor and council, again, this is, again, the Preparation of Feasibility Report. I have a map up of this area here. This is in the South Leg, south of Linwood and north of Highwood. This represents a pavement reclamation project. So, again, this is the type of project where we are concentrating on the pavement condition and replacing that pavement. These are typically neighborhoods that have good concrete curb and gutter. We will do spot repairs, good utilities, so they're not as, they're not as intensive as a full recon, but they are also equally important because of the pavement condition. So, this project is about 2.4 miles of street, and it turns out that the pavement condition index is about the same as the other neighborhood, about a 36. Again, the feasibility report gives staff the direction to begin with our preliminary surveying, soil borings, appraisal analysis, as well as, again, hosting a number of neighborhood meetings and working with the residents. So, with that, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Juneman.
Then, with the age of this neighborhood, are we anticipating that you may find any issues with basic services that are in these roads, or not?
Mayor and council, no. So, these, these neighborhoods in this area here, generally, the sanitary sewers are in good shape, the storm sewer system is in place, so it's really concentrating on that pavement condition.
Thank you.
But we will analyze our existing system, if there are spot repairs to be made or things like that, we'll catch that during the feasibility study.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I move approval of the resolution adopting Preparation of Feasibility Study for the Schaller Area Pavement Rehabilitation Project, City Project 19-11.
Second. Moved by Juneman, seconded by Smith, motion to approve the attached resolution ordering the preparation of a feasibility study for Schaller Area Pavement Rehabilitation, City Project 19-11. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. And now, we move to the last agenda item, which is to consider, to go into closed session to consider the purchase offer to sell city-owned property. Mr. Beatty, do you want to help us with that, please?
Sure, Madam Mayor, council. The proposal is to close the session to discuss purchase agreement offers and counteroffers, and that is a provision that allows you to close the meeting. That, that portion of the meeting, though, must be taped.
Pardon me?
That must be taped.
Thank you. Councilmembers, is there a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
The motion should state that it is a motion to close the city council meeting pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.05 subdivision 3C.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.